It is 5:31. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Thank you. As usual, this meeting is also available online. If you're attending by Zoom, if you would like to join the conversation, if you will type the word question or comment in the comments field, we will call on you. Moving to public comments, comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals be limited to three minutes of speaking time and cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Reference will be given to Talalaw residence and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any topic or issue raised by speaker during this public comment period. Does anyone have a comment they would like to address to the council? Kathy Cott, you're online?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Kathy Cott. I'm a citizen of Talalaw. City of Talalaw policies regarding rental of city properties need to be clear and readily available to the public if they wish to have groups plan events in the city's facilities. All persons involved in renting city premises to citizens should, at the very least, be able to provide a link to complete and concise regulations that must be adhered to by all lessees to facilitate successful planning of events. If not, the city will continue to see a decline in events and use of its public facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Jamie, are you here to speak for Main Street? Okay. All right. If not, then we will move forward to discussion related to COVID-19 pandemic. This has my name on it, but I'm going to hand it off to Counselor Long.
Yes, ma'am. We met today at 11:00. Northeastern Health Systems stated they are seeing an increase in COVID cases. 100% of positive inpatient cases are with unvaccinated persons. They are continuing to coordinate with Cherokee Nation on their efforts. All visitors and patients are required to wear masks, one visitor per patient in designated areas. PPE supplies are good, vaccinations are trending upward. Cherokee Nation also emphasized that they were seeing an increase in COVID cases and reminded us that the Cherokee National Holiday has been moved to a virtual event. They have a critical care response team on site to provide additional support through IHS. PPE supplies are also good, vaccinations continue to trend upward with them as well. They stated that 95% of positive inpatient cases are with unvaccinated persons. Both healthcare systems are being impacted by the demand for healthcare workers in a very competitive economy as a result of COVID. Many surrounding communities and healthcare systems are increasing their pay rates and attempting to entice healthcare workers away from our community. Both hospital systems are treating patients with infusions. These infusions have been helpful and prevent the severity of cases in patients at both facilities. Predictions from epidemiology state that we are not yet at the peak of COVID. Both hospitals are strongly encouraging masking, vaccinations, hand washing, social distancing, and avoiding crowds as part of a multimodal response. Additionally, from an economic impact standpoint, quarantines that are impacting children and adults are affecting our local workforce, therefore causing issues for local businesses when you don't have sufficient staff to operate your facilities. I also received a message from Talalaw Public Schools this afternoon. They stated that they, of course, reopened last Thursday. They are highly encouraging families to have their kids wear masks. They have had multiple cases of COVID last Friday and again today. TPS also wanted me to let you know they're again providing free school supplies to all students this year, and all students are able to eat free. Anyone interested in substitute teaching or bus driving should also apply through the TPS website. I'm assuming they're also having issues finding enough staff to man those positions. Mayor, was there anything I left out that you want to incorporate?
There is nothing that you left out. However, I would emphasize that our numbers are increasing. If you have what you think is your normal seasonal runny nose, headache, whatever it could be, COVID, those are the same symptoms. And so our health folks were asking, if you think you might have it, please get tested. Don't just make the assumption because you're not just sick, that you're not spreading this virus. So I would encourage you to continue to be vigilant, to be, continue to be careful. And it's going to take all of us working together to stop this virus and get back to life as we'd like for it to be. With that, item number seven is discussion and presentation regarding city of Talalaw residents being invited to participate in a program called Yard by Yard. Counselor Ratliff and JD Hudgens.
Thank you, Mayor. This looks like a great program for our citizens here in the community. I was reached out to by Mr. JD Hudgens here with the NRCS, and I think he's got a small presentation he'd like to share with us today.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, city officials, and ladies and gentlemen. As you have heard, my name is JD Hudgens. I am the soil technician from the Cherokee County Conservation District, and I am introducing a small community resiliency project called Yard by Yard. Basically, it was formed a little over a year ago when the COVID became into existence from Kevin Mink. He is stationed at Stillwater within the NRCS. He's a soil scientist, and even though it's brand new, nothing's set in stone yet, but there's many things that might change, but I will keep you informed of that. Basically, a whole overview of the Yard by Yard project is that urban citizens do not always realize what a big difference they can make in our communities by just adding a few earth-friendly practices. Through the Yard by Yard project, we can highlight the excellent work that urban citizens are already doing, and we can strongly encourage others to try out projects that help build resiliency within our community. And resiliency is added to the urban environment when yards have healthy soils. And when we look at the concrete communities, yards are a space of small ecosystems. Healthy soils can mean that yards are more tolerant to droughts and during times of heavy rain. The healthy soils will encourage infiltration compared to non-pervious surfaces. In addition to maintaining healthy soils, another major goal of the new urban project is to provide food for pollinators such as bees, butterflies, bats, and other pollinator creatures that need food sources and host plants in the cities. As a whole, all the neighborhoods that hopefully will come together for the greater good can absolutely add strength, health, and resiliency to this fair city. Wonderful and impactful things will happen. You will cut down on the amount of waste going into a landfill. You will enjoy the blossoms of native plants. You will savor the taste of homegrown fruits and vegetables. You will improve the health of your soil and conserve our most precious resource of all, which is water. Your individual stewardship efforts contribute to a greater movement that will reclaim our connection to the earth one yard at a time. And I can't wait to see the impact of this project with your help in our communities. And that was a basic overview, and this right here is the packet, the certification for the Yard by Yard. So it has four categories. It'll have soil, water, food, and habitat, and there's any number of practices that you can certify. And you, all you need to do is to choose, utilize five practices across three out of the four categories, and that you will checkmark that you maintain a pesticide-free yard. It must be pesticide-free. And that on the back, if anyone is interested, that they will submit a video or a photo release form to the Oklahoma Association Conservation of Districts that threw us for the purpose of publication and promotion and the illustration and advertise and/or trade in any matter or the medium to get more people involved for this program. And I also have some pamphlets that I will be handed out to individuals, urban citizens that are interested, and a general overview of the whole Yard by Yard project, and also a Yard by Yard wildflower mix of what the seeds will contain. And also, if they are certified, they will get this sign right here, and they will show 50% of the time outside the yard. And so they will also get seed packets, one for them, and then the other one can go to their neighbor or friend or church member or anyone that's interested about it. And that way, we can keep adding numbers and utilize everyone that is involved. And if they are involved, they can email me on my work email, and that if they are interested, I can go out there and certify it. And it'll, and once they are certified, they can actually get recognition, as I said, and promotion through the Yard by Yard Facebook page, along with the OACD Facebook page as well, to bring more people in. Is there any questions or concerns so far?
Yes, sir. I'm not seeing where I returned my form. Is there an address that I'm missing?
You can return. You can return the form to me, and I can submit it to our representative from Blue Thumb. It is sponsored by Blue Thumb, Soul Health, and as I mentioned, OACD, free clubs and organizations, to Cheryl Chittle. She is the guru of this project, and she's going to, when we do get our first participant, and we have one so far, I still need to contact her. Her name is Joyce Varner. She is interested in this. And Cheryl Chittle will go with me to go on my first certification, like, what am I looking for? You know, just getting down the basics, and then we can go from there. But all forms must be emailed, submitted to me, and I can forward it to Cheryl Chittle from Blue Thumb.
Then your email address is?
All lowercase, jack, JCK, with a period, Hudgens, H-U-D-G-I-N-S, at USDA.gov. And that's my work email, and I can be reached at at any time between 8:00 to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Any more, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, JD.
Thank you.
Item number eight is discussion possible action to accept bid number 2021-03 received from Conrad Fire Equipment for the purchase of a triple combination pumper. Fire Chief Baker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a budgeted item. A bid packet was given to the purchasing agent for the advertisement on July 15th. On top of that, we had two vendors that showed interest that we gave addresses to the purchasing agents to actually mail individually to them, or I'm sorry, email to them. We had an opening bid on August 6th with one bid return from Conrad Fire. They're manufacturing at Pierce. That is the trucks that we've had. The last three, four engines have been pierced, our ladder trucks pierced. So we're pretty familiar with this company. So is there any questions?
Yes, I appreciate you telling us it's a Pierce truck. There isn't anything in the handouts that tells us exactly what it is we're buying as far as specifications. Are there particular items that are included on this truck that are different, unusual, something that we would want to publish? You know, this is something that this truck has because a triple combination pumper, just, there are several types. And when I went out on the internet and, you know, just ran a Google search, there are lots of different variations. So what are we getting?
So this is re-replacing an engine. So this is replacing a 24-year-old engine that we have. This will be our main truck out in the downtown area out of Station One. It is the main truck that goes, I guess for layman's terms, the first truck out to any structure fire. This will be housing 1,000 gallons of water on it. This will be hooked and be able to hook to hydrant. It's going to have attack lines for firefighters to attack the structure fire. It's going to have a monitor on top to where we can attack bigger fires also. It's going to be able to house SCBA's on the truck. It's going to have a cab for rehab for firefighters during hot months. And it's going to carry hose. It's going to carry equipment for basically fighting any type of structure. And that's what it is. I'm sorry, Mayor, the bid packet, as you can see, I brought. It's pretty length. I just put the top ones on in y'all's packet. I didn't know if you needed the whole thing, but Jerika did have the whole thing, so you want to look at line by line on each one?
Yeah, I don't need a line by line, but you know, a lot of what I was seeing was what type of engine it has, whether it's got the extra-long four-door cab.
So it's a custom cab. A custom cab is basically for the protection of firefighters, and it's going to have a kind of industrial-type air conditioning system. So if there is a wreck, it's not going to just crush like the conventional, like a conventional cab. So it's going to sustain a rollover or something and protect the firefighters. Also, the commercial-type air conditioning system, you can house about five to six guys up front and be able to cool them off pretty quick. So as far as the engine, Mark's going to come on up here. Mark's kind of was the brainchild behind the engines and the specifications. So if you want to tell me what type of engine it is?
Like Chief Baker said, it's a custom cab, Pierce truck. It's going to have a Cummins motor in it, automatic transmission. It will have capabilities to carry rescue tools on it. So, and, you know, it's a pretty standard-type engine we'll be replacing. It does have 1,500-gallon pump on it, 1,000 gallons of water, and have like a 30-gallon foam cell, so we will pump foam with the apparatus also. So it's a pretty, you know, we're replacing a 1,500-gallon pump, so to maintain truck we're getting rid of, keep 1,500-gallon pump, maintain the same pump size.
So you said it's a 1,000-gallon?
1,000 gallons of water with.
Is that really a large one?
That's bigger than most engines. Typically, carry 500 to 750. In the city of Talalaw, we've always carried 1,000. So it's a little bit bigger than probably the bigger cities carry, but it gives us more time to get our people there for everything, you know.
One of the reasons why we carry, you know, more water than, say, like Tulsa Broken Arrow, is we do have to respond sometimes out in the rural areas that don't have the water system that they do in the city. So the more water, the better for us. But typically, this truck will be in the city, but there is some times that, you know, if we call for another truck, we had one down, we're going to respond with it.
Are we going to leave the old truck in operation and use it in another area?
So typically, what's kind of happened, and kind of talking with Allen and the mayor, we kind of had the foresight of, in the past, what's happened is these trucks, we basically have let them stay in service until they just cannot stay in service any longer. And then typically, they'll transfer to the street department where they use them as a water truck, what have you. And then it just kind of goes all the way to, when they try to sell them, they just don't get any money out of them. So what the thought was, Ben's, that we still can probably get money out of this one, because it's still a decent truck. We can be able to recoup some of that money back that we're losing, in other words, basically just in scrap.
I have one question, Mayor. Does the current truck have foam at all or foam capability?
The truck that it's replacing does not have foam.
Because you said the current truck is the one that we bought in 19.
1997.
But this one will have foam capability?
This will have foam capabilities. And basically, what we've determined on the foam, it helps us, you know, in the extinguishment. Typically, we'll go knock the fire down, get it knocked down, typically, and then at the end of it, we'll use the foam to basically extinguish it. So we don't have any rekindles. It helps us not having to go back.
So the bid that's here is a little bit above what the amount that was budgeted? Not dramatically, but?
Yes, the budgeted amount was $499,585. The bid came in at 504-500, which is the difference of $4,915. That's basically the price of metal, and everything's going up. So that's kind of locked in until the end of this month. There is a price increase come September, which will go up to 513, which is a difference of 13, it's be $13,000 more. So basically, if we get it by the end of this month, we'll save about $8,500.
We actually receive the truck before you did it, Mark?
No, it's about a 10-month build.
Actually, the bid says livery within 405 days after receipt of the order. So the bid response allows for well over a year.
Mark is in contact with the sales rep. He thinks he can get it on the line here pretty quick, and he's the one that's telling us possibly going to be 10 months.
And so they make these, like, as they're ordered, they make them?
Yeah, it's a custom.
They put in a ticket, custom, and they make it. That's really cool.
I did follow up with a question Friday about where this was bid out, and it was just bid out locally in the local newspaper.
As far as published?
As far as publication.
Which I think meets our bid requirements for our purchasing policy, but we may want to look at that policy and update it, because there are some things like specialty equipment like this that probably need to be on a national website. These builders are looking at specific places to find what municipalities are bidding out, and we're probably not reaching as many people as we could.
The, a lot of cities are using HGAC. I don't know if y'all's familiar with that, but the city is not a member of that. So HEAC is basically kind of a state contract, but since we are not members of it, we cannot utilize HGAC. County was, the city is not. So if you had that, we wouldn't have to go through all this bid process.
Casey, how much does that cost, the HGAC?
I think it's just a sign up for it. I'm not sure if there is a cost. I can check into that.
I think what Northeastern was using, there was a very small percentage on whatever you were bidding out as far as value. There was an amount you paid, but you only paid it when you were putting something on the site.
Yeah, I think Northeastern's on it also. I think I checked it just to double-check before we start this process, but I think Cherokee County and Northeastern, Cherokee Nation.
Could you check and see how much that would cost?
Yes, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Other questions about the triple combination pumper truck?
Would anyone like to take any action?
I'd like to take action to accept the bid.
That a motion?
Yes, motion to accept.
Is there a second?
For the 504-500, if we order it by the end of the month?
Yes.
Yes. Modified, yes. Modified for, to accept the bid for the 504,000, if we order it before, if that's fit standards.
I'll second.
Is that phrasing okay for that motion?
It is, yeah.
It needs to include the actual dollar. It, it needs to include the actual dollar amount, though, the five oh four, five hundred?
Five oh four, five hundred, I stand corrected.
Will you modify your second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any comments, questions from the public?
And Mayor, I'm so delighted, and I recognize. I'm so delighted to hear this discussion because there was a residential fire within half a block from me this last week. It's the second one within five years of that particular residence. And it concerns people if they think the whole block is going to go. And you got it under control. Uh, so, you know, this information is sounding good.
It does sound good, doesn't it?
Yes.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Long, yes, Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratler?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Item number nine is discussion possible action to accept the lowest, most responsible bid and award the contract for project number fifty-one hundred, the dog park slash concrete. Uh, Planning Development Director, Taylor Tannehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, I'm going to start with a little bit of history on this project. Um, we held bids on the dog park a few months ago, and the lowest bid that we received for that pro- or for that, uh, particular bid was two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That bid included all portions of the dog park, so it included the parking lot, fencing, fencing, a pavilion, base work, and site prep. Um, that bid was well above our budget for the dog park, so we had to go back to the drawing board. And, uh, we began with the street department to discuss items that may, they may be willing to, uh, help us out on in reducing our contractors' costs. And so, um, a couple of things that, uh, they were willing to, to help us out on was, um, site preparation, including, uh, putting the base down, and that's the, the one and a half inch crusher run that you'll see in the documents. And then the other was laying asphalt if needed. And so after that discussion, we came up with a bid that included a few alternates to provide some flexibility on the, on deciding how to go about constructing the park. So I'm going to go briefly over, uh, the four bids that were available for this project. The base bid requires the contractor to provide labor, equipment, and material for the sidewalk and concrete portion of the pad. And if you see the site plan, that's the, that wide area on the site plan. Alternate number one requires the contractor to provide labor, equipment, and material for the sidewalk. Uh, well, actually, so, uh, for the parking lot and bid that as a concrete parking lot. So that's alternate number one. Alternate number two requires the contractor only supply labor and equipment for the sidewalk and pad. Again, the white area on the site plan. This alternate requires the city to supply the material for the concrete work, but it also allows the city to lay the asphalt, uh, for that parking lot. And again, obviously, we'd be paying for the material on that. Alternate number three requires the contract to only supply labor and equipment, uh, for the sidewalk, uh, pad and parking lot. And we would apply, uh, supply the material, uh, for that part of the project. So, uh, going over those alternates, um, I went and reviewed the bids, and I want to make a comment on, if I can find it in my documents here. Sheets number twenty-three and twenty-four, uh, in the packet. So I broke down the cost of what it would, uh, cost for our, our material side. So you get an overall view of what the project will cost for each alternate, uh, alternative bid that I, I just laid out. And what you have in the packet is asphalt for, uh, two inches of an overlay. And talking with the street commissioner after I had submitted the packet, he recommended a four-inch. And so the total figure for asphalt would be doubled. And alternate two's total construction price is actually fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents for Redstone and eighty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred ninety-eight, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars for CEI bid. So just want you to be aware, and again, these are, these are estimates on the materials. Um, and so just want you to have that information before making a decision on the alternates. Um, with that being said, uh, before I give my recommendation-
Excuse me, could I get those dollar amounts since they are different than what's reflected?
Yeah, uh, so the alternate number two, item number, or line item three is fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents for Redstone.
I, I'm sorry, I'm still lost.
I can give you either fifty-nine, seven-
Yeah, are we on page twenty-three?
So we are on page twenty-three. The total where it says forty-six thousand, three, thirty?
Yes.
That total is fifty-nine, seven, twenty-eight, thirty.
All of that difference is in the city side, not-
Right, that's correct. It doesn't increase the contract amount, it, it just increases the total project amount.
Okay.
And on page twenty-four, same, same line, uh, that seventy-three thousand, one seventy-three would come to eighty-six, nine, eighty-eight, eight, ninety-eight, sorry.
Also, all on the city side?
Correct. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you for your help with that.
Mm-hmm. Uh, before I provide the recommendation, um, are there any questions about what, uh, any more questions about what just discussed there?
I'd just like to clarify, it doesn't include any restrooms or any pavilion with tables or anything?
That's correct. It is, uh, only the sidewalk area, the pad, the parking lot, and, uh, fencing is a separate.
But it will all have the plumbing?
Uh, so the site plan was created, and, uh, we didn't have all the site details. We're looking at another location for the actual restroom, uh, which will be better served, uh, sewer-wise.
Okay.
Where that's located is just not going to be feasible to sewer it there.
Okay, well, that makes, so it makes sense.
I'll go ahead with the, with the recommendation. Uh, and so staff recommends selecting alternate bid number two from Redstone Contracting LLC and awarding the contract in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents.
Um, thank you, Taylor, for all your work you're doing on this. I really appreciate everything you do guys. I know you put a tremendous amount of hours into this project, thank you.
It's been a process, that's for sure.
The understatement, understatement. And I will happily make a motion to approve based upon staff recommendation.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, just trying to wrap my mind around this here. So I'm on page twenty-three, and you're telling me nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars is what we're awarding the bid? I mean, potentially. I'm just, okay, okay, so I'm back on page twenty is where I need to be then, okay, my fault. But the cost of the material, that's where you threw me for a loop, Taylor, on that, on that sixty thousand. So you talked to the street commissioner, he says we need four inches, not two inches, and that's, that's the justification for the increase?
Yeah, that's the justification for the increase on the, the document that I created to, to help with understanding the total cost. Um, and again, two inches to four, that just doubled the cost of the asphalt, uh, from thirteen, seven, twenty-five to twenty-seven, four, fifty.
And, and Counselor Long, I'm sorry, will you remind us what the origin of the funds are and what the total amount was on that?
That's an excellent question. It was a private donation in the amount of, what, two hundred thousand?
No, it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty, sorry, it's been so long, I've, yeah, sorry, a hundred fifty thousand.
I see.
I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry, you're, you're looking that way.
Private donation in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand.
One fifty?
How much is this going to totally cost, sir?
Um, as far, when you mean totaled, you mean-
Total, as in if we take it, the whole process, the nineteen thousand plus our part?
And, uh, potentially the fencing or other portions of the project?
Just as of right now, how much do we have?
As of right now, um, calculated fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents. That doesn't include striping, parking bumpers, and the bollards.
Okay.
But those are marginal costs that won't, you know, exceed that budget.
Removable.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, how much did it cost, fifty-nine thousand, and then the nineteen thousand for this?
Fifty-nine is, includes the nineteen.
Okay, the fifty-nine, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, thanks, Taylor, thank you, great.
So we have the motion? Second, any other questions? Do we have a roll call?
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratler?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number ten, discussion possible action to accept the lowest, most responsible bid and award the contract for project number fifty-one zero-one, Dog Park Fencing. Again, Mr. Tannehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this one is, uh, not as confusing, I promise, at least I hope not. Uh, no alternates on this. It was, uh, simply bidding out the sixteen hundred linear feet of, uh, commercial-grade fencing, uh, along with a couple of gates. And, uh, we received two bids on this project, uh, just as the last. And, um, the recommendation is to award the contract to Redstone Contracting LLC in the amount of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eight cents.
Can you say that amount again, Taylor?
Forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eight cents.
Questions, Council?
But I think you touched on this already. Then let me go back to my aerial view here. So this is the first one, item number nine, is for the, you know, for the concrete work, the asphalt work, with the exception of the striping and the bollards and the, and the restroom, as Counselor Baker pointed out. And so this one is for the fence. So what's, so that mean, based upon what I'm looking at, we're in it roughly a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight thousand? And so what's, what's left? I mean, what do we, what are we missing other than the bathrooms? I think we talked about and, and just the smaller stuff.
Yeah, so it's really the cosmetics, uh, what's left. Um, a part of the parking lot, we will run some conduit to, to allow for a future light to light up that parking lot. Um, but benches, you know, maybe some, a little bit of landscaping. Probably the big-ticket item is a pavilion at some point in the future. Yeah, and so, um, depending on, you know, obviously, there, there could be events down there, uh, with a dog park. We'd like to have some place where people can meet and, and get out of the weather if they need to. Uh, but it's a fairly shaded area already, and so there's enough, you know, space for people to kind of congregate in those areas. And depending on the budget, um, a pavilion may, may come in a future day.
There, there is also a need, generally in a dog park, there are some play equipment kinds of things. So there will be a few things to provide for the animals that will ultimately have to come out of that donation as well.
Signage is another thing. Um, we'll also have to create, uh, you know, some sort of, uh, rules board, so people will know what the rules are when they go out there. Um, so most of them minor, with the exception of the pavilion, that's kind of, uh, one that we'll have to explore a future day, I think.
And kind of the intent of the donor was that, that some civic organization get established and kind of help facilitate some event activities and fundraise and, and kind of add to that aesthetic as we grow and expand the purpose of the property.
Much like a youth sports league?
Much like the youth sports league. I don't think- Only for dogs. Maybe we can have a little doggy ice skating rink out there.
Yeah. Just be with the dog.
A dog, Ruthie.
Bitch.
The only thing that I, I foresee as a problem is, is like, making sure that we have adequate water for the dogs while we're there. If we haven't put this stuff in by that time.
That's a good, good point. Um, that's another one of those costs that's not included in, in the two projects here tonight. Um, we talked to the water department, we can tie into a water line there right off a basin, that shouldn't be an issue. Um, and so we'll, we'll have, uh, adequate water for the dogs and, uh, people as well.
All right, I'll make a motion to award the lowest bid of, and I'm sorry, I lost my page, forty-seven, what page is that?
Forty-seven, three, forty, okay, page twenty-eight.
Forty-eight? Forty- Forty-seven, forty-five. Forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eight cents to Redstone.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any further questions or comments? If not, can we have a roll call?
Counselor Hires?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Ratler?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number eleven is discussion possible action to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the Ross Street Improvement Project with Holloway Updike and Bellon, Inc., in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars. Mr. Tannehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is a contract or engineering services for Ross Street, uh, which will begin, I believe it's on Chapman, um, up to Cedar, probably extend to the bypass, uh, although those improvements have been made, uh, with the exception of some sidewalks. Um, what, what's going to be engineered is widening the lane widths to a minimum degree. Not, it's not going to be a three-lane scenario, uh, like you see on Fourth Street, but giving a little bit more room for those vehicles. But we'll also, uh, be engineering the curbing there as well as the hydraulics to ensure that we can get the water, um, underneath the ground instead of in those ditches. Um, and so that's, uh, that's the basics of the engineering services. Once completed, we'll go out to bid. It is on our, um, six-year plan, uh, for street improvements, uh, and it is expected to hopefully be bid out next fiscal year, uh, barring the engineering services.
And this is a street and sidewalk?
Yes. Yep.
Mr. Nagel? If you wouldn't?
The engineering, I'm sorry. Quick question, does the engineering include assessment of the utilities that are underlying, such as, uh, um, let's say, water, uh, sewer and gas lines that might need to be, uh, replaced before the, the, uh, street is redone?
Uh, they'll just locate those, uh, lines, the utilities there. Um, we'll then approach utility company and, uh, see if they need to do any upgrades, those systems. And if they do, we'll work with them on timelines of construction. Uh, but as far as I know, I think they just replaced a water line, and I don't believe there's any sewer line, uh, issues up there. Uh, but for this contract, it's just identifying the locations, not necessarily the quality of, of what's there.
I, I do have one question. Or on the change orders, uh, are there was going to be an additional charge? Or are they into this contract? Are they made into or included in?
Um, that's a good question. They are not, uh, per the contract, they're not going to be in charge of the contracting, will do that internally. Um, so they won't be involved, they, they won't be involved in the bidding and the actual, uh, construction management portion. We, we took that out of the contract to reduce the cost.
What I'm talking about is the actual change orders for if they need to redraw.
Oh, their change orders.
Their change orders themselves.
Um, if that, if that occurs, um, we'll likely have to come back, uh, here to increase the amount of this contract. Come back to council.
Do we know how much on, on average, a change-
Do we know how much on, on average, a change order, or?
I, I've never experienced a change order on an engineering contract. Uh, usually, they, they can work within, um, those amounts, uh, so I, I couldn't answer that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I just wanna make the council aware that sometimes there are
Sure.
change orders, and they can do, or can increase the cost significantly.
If there were, if there was a change order, it would certainly have to go back to this body to, to approve that.
So we have a motion second? Or do we not?
I make a motion to approve the item as presented.
I have a question, Mayor. Um, what is our, what is our bid, bid ceiling? Is it fifty or seventy-five? Like when we have to bid a project? Like a purchase, if we're making a purchase, I mean, what is it?
So the, uh, bid limits are a little different for construction projects than they are for buying of equipment, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Chapman, because I think he's got the, uh, policy here in front of me.
Five thousand dollars, the departments have authority to use good business practices.
Up to, usually an up to five?
Up to five thousand. From five to ten thousand, they can do good business practices over the phone. Ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars require written supporting documentation for their bids. And then on public construction contracts, over fifty thousand according to our policy requires competitive bidding on public construction contracts.
So I guess, so I guess my question, you know, and I, I know that we've only been presented with Hub here, normally, I mean, would this, is this different since it's at fifty-one? I mean, would it not, do we not need to compare apples and oranges and bananas, or is it?
Engineering is a professional service.
Professional service, not a, not a contract.
And it's not the actual construction.
And for professional services, the threshold's twenty-five thousand. Anytime there's a professional service contract above twenty-five thousand, we have, we're required to come to council.
Okay, but it's just where you can bring, you can bring the name to the table, doesn't necessarily, we don't have to bid out professional services per se.
Actually, for some things like, uh, engineering on streets, you can't bid it out. You have to get proposals, and you're supposed to compare on services and not on the dollar amount. It's an entirely different set of rules.
Okay, sorry, I'm just, I just don't know anything about it, thank you.
No, good question. Okay, so we have a motion second? We have a roll call, please?
Councilor Ratler?
Yes.
Councilor Long? Yes. Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Item number twelve is adjournment?
So moved.
Do we have a roll call?
Councilor Long? Yes. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Ratler?
Yes.
Thank you very much.